I'm going to call this meeting, this regular business meeting of the Laramie City Council, to order. Let the record reflect it, it is Tuesday, June 7, 2016, and the time is 6:30 PM. First item on the agenda is our Pledge of Allegiance, if you'd all join me.
(inaudible) 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 (inaudible)
City Clerk, would you do roll call, please?
Hanson.
Here.
Henry.
Here.
Shumway.
Here.
Schuster.
Here.
Somerville.
Here.
Vitale, absent.
Weaver.
Here.
Pierce.
Here.
Polikis.
Here.
That is eight present and one absent, Your Honor.
Thank you. Next item is, we have two proclamations to be read. The first one is concerning Bike to Work Day, and it reads as follows: "Whereas millions of Americans engage in cycling because it is a viable and environmentally friendly, sound form for transportation and an excellent and an excellent form of physical fitness, whereas Bike to Work Day helps to increase public awareness for bicycling, educate the community about the benefits of bicycling for transportation purposes, and encourages people to try bicycle commuting; whereas there is a need to promote an alternative form of transportation such as walking and bicycling in order to reduce pollution, reduce America's dependence on fossil fuels, and improve the health and well-being of all people. And whereas increasing the number of bicycling lanes, paths, storage facilities, and traffic calming measures will help the city ease automobile traffic congestion and encourage a healthy lifestyle for residents. Now therefore be it resolved that June 22, 2016 is hereby designated as Bike to Work Day in the city of Laramie, Wyoming, furthermore encourages all citizens to recognize the importance of sharing our streets and highways with cyclists." And I have three people here to accept this proclamation, Eric Milner, Dewey Geigos, and Jessica Flock. If you'd come forward, please. Why don't you come on up and grab the, and take the proclamation, then I'll ask you. And if you'd like to say a few words, thank you very much.
(applause)
Jessica, if you'd like to say, or any of you if you'd like to say a few words, that would be wonderful.
Honorable Mayor, Council, thank you very much for your support for Bike to Work Day. I continue to feel, year after year, the support we get from all of you for alternative pathways, bicycling, walking around our community, and it's greatly appreciated.
Thank you.
Your Honor, Council, I just want to say the same, I wanted to echo what Jessica says. I really appreciate just the support that the cycling community fills in Laramie. There's no better feeling than getting to work with human power, getting to interact with our community in such a personal way. The only, I think the only thing that is more personal is walking, and who wants to walk when you can ride a bicycle? So, thank you for helping support that, we really appreciate it.
Thank you.
Honorable Mayor, Honorable, ah, honorable, honorable Mayor and City Council, I am tongue twisted tonight, so thank you so much for helping support such a great cause, and biking to work, biking in general is just a great thing, it's great exercise for our youth, for anyone of any age, and we're just glad we can be a part of it and provide some snacks and a breakfast on June 22nd, so I hope to see some of you there, too, so, thank you.
Thank you guys for coming tonight. All right, our second proclamation has to do with the inaugural Laramie Youth Council, and I'm going to ask Councilor Shumway to read the proclamation because he, along with some other councilors, have been intimately involved in this group. Councilor Shumway.
Thank you very much, Mayor. The inaugural Laramie Youth Council, before I read this, I wanted to make a few comments, has been a great success. I will say this, this was so important because we, this is a very important voice in our community that we were not using, we were not having the opportunity to hear from the youth, and we were able to get together some, a group of young men and women that really did a wonderful job of starting the first year of the Laramie Youth Council, set a standard that is absolutely great, and we can, and we see now that it's continuing on, and this is great. I want to recognize on the council, Andy Somerville, Klaus Hanson, Paul Weaver, and myself, who were very much involved in getting the inaugural group started. Most of the meetings were attended by Andy, myself, and Klaus, but there was so much input and support from this council and the community, and also from the school district, from the county, and from other groups. I will say this, one of the key pieces that really made this go forward was the city manager's office gave us Sam Farstead. He did a wonderful job of not only preparing, but working with the group and making sure that we stayed on task and kept things going. Again, it's been wonderful. Klaus Hanson, by the way, gave $1,000 just to make sure that this, that was a portion of money that they could use, and we appreciate that. Now, let me read this proclamation, then the mayor's going to ask some people to come up and speak, but I will say this, I am so proud of the youth of this community, I'm so proud of the group that has come forward and taken this task seriously and did some great work the first year, and now looking forward for it to continue. This is the proclamation for the inaugural Laramie Youth Council. Whereas the Laramie City Council, Albany County School District, and Albany County Commission came together to create the Laramie Youth Council in 2015 to better represent the youth in our community and give them a voice in local government. Whereas the LYC, or Laramie Youth Council, mission is to promote young leadership, education about local and state government, and serve as a policy advisory body to incorporate the youth opinion into policymaking decisions for the Laramie City Council, Albany County and Albany, Albany County and Albany County School District. Whereas local students from ages 14 to 19 applied for the LYC, and 15 were appointed to compete, complete the inaugural year from August 2015 to May 2016. Whereas it is recognized that the Laramie Youth Council participant, participated in the Wyoming Association of Municipalities Conference, Wyoming State Legislature in 2016 Budget Session, and numerous local government learning opportunities. Whereas it is recognized that the Laramie Youth Council provided valuable policy advisory suggestions and resolutions to the local governing bodies on policies that affect youth, ensuring the voice of young members of the community as, that are being heard. Whereas it is recognized that the inaugural Laramie Youth Council has accomplished a tremendous first year, the 2015-2016 Laramie Youth Council has provided a powerful foundation for this youth leadership and policy advisory body for the future. Whereas it is recognized that each member of the Laramie Youth Council has dedicated a tremendous amount of time and attention to make this program successful. Now therefore be it resolved that the Laramie, the inaugural Laramie Youth Council is hereby recognized for their dedication, leadership commitment to providing a youth voice, and for their commitment to the community. And then in witness thereof, it says that the mayor has attached his, this official seal of the city and his signature on the 6th day of June 2016. Mayor, you're going to call some people forward.
Actually, I think we have one person here, Madeline Moreno, and I believe that's all that's here from the Youth Council.
But we want to hear from also Sam.
And we're going to hear from Sam Farstead, but Madeline, if you'd come up and accept this proclamation on behalf of the council, I'm going to give you several proclamations for the other members of your Youth Council, okay?
Thank you.
Thank you very much. (applause)
Also, Mayor, Madeline was the president this year, and did a wonderful job. They organized themselves, they selected their leaders, and they served well.
And I believe off to Georgetown, is that correct?
Yes.
Congratulations, and thank you for serving on that council.
Thank you.
Excellent, excellent.
Honorable Mayor, Council, I just wanted briefly say thanks for the recognition. It was really the, the, working with the Youth Council was a privilege and really a highlight of my week-to-week activities, working in the city manager's office. And Councilor Shumway, I want to say thanks for recognizing all the integral members up here that put in a lot of extra time in helping this be a success. I think that, that Madeline being here as our chairman this year, and she's head enough to our nation's capital as Councilor, Somerville will sit next year to take different leadership roles and I think will represent the city of Laramie, Wyoming. I think the complicated schedules of this group didn't, didn't allow for more of them to be present tonight, maybe if we were serving food, it would have helped attend it. It seemed to work pretty well with the monthly meetings. But again, I wanted to say, say thanks for the recognition, thanks for your support and your continued support of this group. I went in front of the county commissioners this morning to ask for funding from the county again for next year, we've got a commitment from the school district, and so it sounds like the founding partners and interests have a, have a real continued vested interest to see it be successful into the future, so, again, thank you very much.
Thank you. Okay, next item on the agenda is a public hearing. This public hearing is for the adoption of the International Fire Code. I will ask the city clerk to read the notice.
The City Council will hold the following public hearing at 6:00 PM on June 7, 2016 in the City Council chambers, Laramie City Hall, 406 Iverson Avenue, Laramie, Wyoming, to take public comments or protests on the following ordinance. Original ordinance number 1943 proposing adoption of the 2015 International Fire Code, IFC, including appendices B, D, E, F, and G. All specifications relative to this matter are available for review at the City of Laramie Fire Department, Fire Prevention and Life Safety Division at 405 Grand Avenue, Laramie, Wyoming. Anyone wishing to be heard should be present or may be represented by his or her agent at the meeting.
Thank you. Is there anyone here tonight to speak to council concerning this public hearing? All right, seeing none, I'll move on to the, I'll close the public hearing and move on to the next item on the agenda, which would be announcements from staff.
Honorable Mayor, there are no staff announcements this evening.
It seems to be one.
Well, nobody signed up on the list.
Keith Warlock.
Keith, Keith, Mr. Warlock, please come forward.
Did you guess something early?
Just a minor problem, please speak.
I'm substituting for Director Feizer, who is on vacation at this point, so I'm not exactly sure of the protocol, I'm sorry.
That's fine.
I do have a couple of announcements regarding our items on the consent agenda, one being that tomorrow, or sorry, Saturday is the Arbor Day for the city of Laramie. We will have the annual tree sale morning at 8:00 PM at the Ison Event Center, followed by a tree planting ceremony at Harbin Park in the afternoon, around 1:00 o'clock, so if you're available for those particular items, we'd love to have you be a part of those, as well as citizens from across the city. We have a nice selection of trees this year for the tree sale, and those should be ready to go out and be planted, lovely weather that we're having with the moisture that we need. The second item that I would like to make you notice of is that we do have an amendment to the contract for aerial applications with VDCI, the company that does our aerial work. In the process of changing our mosquito control program over the course of the winter, we do have a new process that we will be kicking off this season using granular larvicide product arially, and so we did have to go back into our contract with VDCI and put a cost to that particular item because we didn't have that in the, in the contract before. So that is before you as well on the consent agenda to approve that fee structure for the aerial granular larvicide. Any questions that I can help you with?
Councilor Hanson.
Just an observation, I think it was made before, if you want to catch a tree at the tree sale, do not come later than 8:05 because they are always usually gone very quickly, and so that was an announcement that was made every year, and I heartily concur, it happens.
It will be a little different format, we are at the Ison Event Center, which is new, last year we started there with this particular event. We will open the doors at 7:30 to the Ison Event Center, and you can come in, be inside, be warm, we'll start letting people actually pick out trees at 8:00 AM. So between 8:00 and noon, the tree sale will be ongoing.
Thank you. Thank you for that information. All right, disclosures by council members, any conflicts of interest on items we'll be discussing tonight concerning council members. Seeing none, I'll move on, and then I'll turn it over to the Vice Mayor.
Okay. I move that the agenda be set as submitted.
Second.
Thank you, there's a motion and a second by Councilor Shumway. All in favor, that motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion carries. Vice Mayor?
I move that the consent agenda be approved, and that each specific action on the consent agenda be approved as indicated.
Second.
Thank you. There's a motion and a second by Councilor Henry, and I would ask the clerk to do roll call.
Hanson.
Yes, except on item 8D. No on item 8D.
Henry.
Yes.
Shumway.
Yes.
Schuster.
Yes.
Somerville.
Yes.
Vitale, absent. Weaver.
Yes, except on item 8D, no.
Pierce.
Yes.
Polikis.
Yes.
That is eight yeses, except item 8D, and
Six.
Zero nos. I don't know how to appropriately comment on this.
It would be six yeses.
It would be eight es, eight yeses on the consent agenda, with the exception of item 8B, which received
D.
Eight D. Eight D.
D.
Which received six.
Which received six yeses, and one person absent.
Okay, there you go, and one absent, Your Honor.
Thank you. All right, that item passes, we're moving on to the regular agenda. Councilor Somerville.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This is a resolution to become a bicycle-friendly community. I move that the City Council approve Resolution 2016-40, supporting the University of Wyoming's Campus Sustainability Class application to the League of American Bicycleists on behalf of the city of Laramie to become a bicycle-friendly community.
Second.
Thank you. There's a motion and a second, and I'll turn it over to
Ms. Garrett.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor, members of the council. I'm really pleased to be here representing the Parks and Recreation Department tonight on behalf of this particular item. The university sustainability class visited the Parks Tree and Recreation Advisory Board, oh gosh, probably a month or so ago, and presented what they were working towards, and this sustainability class has been working towards an application to have us designated in this fashion, and what was really exciting, I know you all probably saw it in the newspaper, was that we were eighth in the country in terms of our community size being bike-friendly. And the resolution, or the proclamation that you read at the beginning of the meeting, I think it's another indicator, the community's interested in bicycling, they're making strides, the bike racks in the downtown, people are beginning to commute, and I think having the community designated through this process would be another way to highlight where our community is going, and potentially give some national acclaim that, that I think is well, well-deserved. So, anyway, I'd be happy to answer any questions, but I know the university students have been working hard on this. You'll see it was Tyler Carroll, Craig Fuller, Sarah Cron, and Zoe Nelson, they came to our advisory board meeting, and they have been the ones who've been pulling this application together, and I believe it is rather extensive, so I thank them for the work.
Thank you. Comments, questions? Councilor Hanson.
Thank you, Honor. I concur wholeheartedly, I think it's a wonderful thing. I just want to observe that the most bicycle unfriendly road in this town is Iverson Avenue from 9th to 15th Street, and I've remarked on this before, because if you don't break your neck, you're very lucky, be it there's a lot of parking, there are a lot of unevenness in the road, and I think the city, of course, has looked at this, has addressed this, I hope we can get that fixed, because of course it is also one of the most traveled bicycle lanes because of the connection to downtown from the campus, and I just wanted to observe that at this time. Thank you.
Mayor and Council, just in, in response to that, I think when, when we participated in reviewing the plans for Iverson, one of the things that was really exciting was the, the emphasis for bicyclists, and I really do hope that at some point we will have sufficient funding to move forward on that plan holistically, because it could be a really, a real boon to the community. I agree.
Just so everybody survives.
Hopefully so. Thank you.
Other comments by council? I'll say a few things about this, and I said it to the newspaper, some of us repeated that, but, you know, the average age in our, average adult age in our community is 20, I think it's between 26 and 27 years old. If you have to go to campus, which is where most of the 26 and 27-year-olds are going, you need, it, it, the most convenient way to do it is on a bike. We are so fortunate, this community, to have really flat, really flat areas, we don't have a lot of hills, it is ideal for biking, and our community has bought into biking. We as a community, or we as a city have done tremendous things within, over the past several years, to improve our, improve our biking situation with bike lanes and so forth and so on. I'm very interested to see how we rate, I believe part of this, we're gonna, will, will be rated by a national organization as to how we match up for other communities, our size and so forth, but I really believe we need to remain committed to bicycles, and we need to continue to do some exciting things for bikes, such as repairing Iverson Street and creating a, a really good bike throughway through Iverson Street to downtown, and many, many other mores, so I'm glad we've recognized this, I'm glad we're going into a partnership with the university, and I look forward to making even more improvements to our community. Any other comments by council? I know there may be a couple people in the public, from the, from the audience that would like to speak, and I would welcome you at this time. And if you'd identify yourself with the record, please.
Jessica Flock, from pedal, co-owner of Pedal House Bike Shop. Honorable Mayor and Council, thank you again for being so supportive of cycling in our community. I'll just clarify, there's, the League of American Bicycleists is the organization that this application goes through. The sustainability class and the director of the UW Outdoor Program, Dan McCoy, got bicycle-friendly campus designated to them already, so this has been a natural extension, I think, for them to involve the whole community. We have been, we, a number of years ago, started thinking about this with Dan, Dewey and I, Evan O'Toole of Laramie Bike Net, Dan McCoy, Amber Travsky of Cycle Wyoming, a number of people who are really dedicated to it, so I'm very excited to see it, you guys being supportive of the application going through and for this continue. One thing that I want to update you on about with the bike racks downtown, some part of the bike rack committee has been raising funds to get those put downtown. The next sort of piece for us, after we have all the bike racks funded, will be to find some sort of funding and way to do the, I really appreciate up on campus, they have the dismount zone sort of stamps that are in the concrete, so we're gonna, we're gonna want to do that right in downtown to hopefully increase safety for bicyclists, but also between bicyclists and pedestrian potentially accidents, and bicycles and cars, and hopefully reduce some of those things. So that's sort of one of our goals, is to have all those 28 blocks of the historic district of downtown imprinted with dismount zones on sidewalks. We also, I assume that the process will eventually be thinking about which other streets maybe need charoes, where we're doing bicycling and automobiles sort of together, and maybe some potentially high-risk roads like Grand, you know, maybe potentially off-limits to bicycles, because there is such great parallel activity to those. Iverson, once it's improved, Garfield right now is a great, you know, space that's basically the same as Grand, fourth compared to third, that sort of thing. So, we, there, there's progress being made on lots of different fronts, and we really appreciate the support and look forward to hopefully becoming a Laramie bicycle-friendly community in Laramie.
Thank you.
My name's Dewey Geigos, Honorable Mayor, Council, I just want to say thank you again, I want to echo what Jessica said. I'm co-owner of the Pedal House, and just being an activist for cycling in the community, it's always been nice to have such supportive, such a supportive feel from the community and from the council. One of the things, Jessica covered a lot of the stuff that is going on in the community. One of the things that I'd like to see that would, I think would help benefit cycling in the community is to encourage off-street parking, finding ways to use some of those parking spaces that are downtown for one car, and find ways to use those parking spaces for seven, eight, nine, 10 bicyclists. I know that there is a rule against the riding bicycles on the sidewalk, and a lot of our parking is on sidewalks. It's, there is a way to coexist with sidewalk parking and off-street parking and, and the snow removal and all that kind of stuff, and brilliant people like yourselves can probably work that out. So, I'd like to see, as a community activist and member, I'd love to see that, that kind of thing being thought of and, and worked towards, and I just, I really want to say thank you for your consideration of this matter and all matters cycling. We, the community, cycling community really appreciate it, thank you very much.
Thank you for coming. Anyone else wish to speak? Councilor Hanson.
Your Honor, one thing that occurred to me, the, was just mentioned, the, what are they called, charoes or charoe signs? I think we probably need somebody on the newspaper, there right here, just to explain what these things mean, because motorists are still unaware what these big signs mean on 9th Street. They mean, to my knowledge, that the road is being shared by bicycles and cars, and cars still haven't gotten the message quite yet. So I think it would be important to maybe have an article or something like that explaining what these big humongous signs mean.
I did this time last year, but maybe it should come out.
It should be read.
Yeah, I did see, I did see an article about it last year, so thank you, appreciate that. But yeah, it's, I think the idea right now is so that the narrowest streets in Laramie in particular get them, so that you do, bicycles and automobiles are merging, and then making sure that they're just following the rules of the road at that point, to be safer, so, yeah.
Thank you.
That's good. Follow.
Thank you. City Clerk, would you do roll call, please?
Henry.
Yes.
Schuster.
Yes.
Somerville.
Yes.
Vitale, absent. Weaver.
Yes.
Shumway.
Yes.
Hanson.
Yes.
Pierce.
Yes.
Polikis.
Yes.
That is eight yeses, zero nos, and one absent, Your Honor.
Thank you, that motion carries. Item number 11, Councilor Weaver.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I move to award the Imperial Heights Park Development Phase 1 and 2, Diswecard Excavation Incorporated of Laramie, Wyoming, in the amount of $331,400, plus a contingency of $7,345, for a total not to exceed the amount of $338,745. To approve the contract therefore, and authorize the mayor and clerk to sign.
Second.
Thank you, there's a second by Councilor Henry. City staff.
Honorable Mayor, Council, when we opened bids on this particular project, the, all of the bids that we opened were over the amount that we had it budgeted for this particular project. We have done a process by which we eliminated some of the amenities that we would have liked to have in this particular park section, to be down within striking range of getting this within budget, and then as an additional item, we have proposed to transfer funding from the And then, as an additional item, we have proposed to transfer funding from the completed project at Washington Bandshell to help to fund the remaining part of this project so that we can complete it as we would like to do at this point in time. The Washington Park Bandshell project included painting. We got some, some really great work from the curmudgeons that did some excellent carpentry to replace doors and windows and some of the parts of the bandshell at little cost to the city. We have the new paint and lighting going in in the bandshell as well, so that project came in well under budget, and we have $17,000 available and left over from that project to move into the Imperial Heights Park project at this time.
Questions? Any questions from council? Any comments from council? Yes, Councilor Henry?
I just appreciate that we are moving forward on this. I just want to thank you, and Mr. Feazer, and Paul Harrison, and all the people who have been involved in this.
It's been a process getting to this point with this particular project, and the grant funding has been a big boon to us to be able to get to the point where we are, but we want to get forward and develop at least this park site for East Laramie so that there is a little bit more available in that part of town.
I think it's important to have something available in that part of town. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments from council?
Just, I guess, Your Honor, I would make one, which is that we also want to thank those community members that came together for part of the planning process earlier on, and that's always important. I think it's good feedback for the staff and everyone else as they move forward in the process. That's, that's always a meaningful contribution. We do appreciate it.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
And I'd like to thank the curmudgeons for providing the labor so that we could save some money on the bandshell and transfer that money over to this park.
Absolutely.
Once again, they've done our community a great service, even though they probably don't get enough recognition for everything they do.
They're an amazing group.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Is there any comments from the public? City clerk, would you do roll call, please?
Weaver?
Yes.
Vitale, absent Somerville?
Yes.
Schuster?
Yes.
Shumway?
Yes.
Henry?
Yes.
Hanson?
Yes.
Pierce?
Yes.
Polikus?
Yes.
That is eight yeses, zero noes, and one absent, Your Honor.
That item passes, or that item moves, that motion carries, and we'll move on to the next item, which is Councilor Schuster.
Thank you. Title of this original ordinance is number 1946, amending title fifteen of the Laramie Municipal Code for the purpose of amending Chapter fifteen dot zero eight dot zero four zero dot B dot three dot B dot lot, eliminating the differential residential development standards for garages within the Turner Track overlay zone. I will read this correctly, so make sure you pay attention. I move to deny original ordinance number 1946 on first reading as recommended by the Planning Commission that would amend Chapter fifteen dot zero eight dot zero four zero dot B dot three dot B dot I, the Turner Track overlay development standards of the Unified Development Code basing on finding in fact conclusions of law specifically finding that it does not conform to the Turner Track plan.
Second.
Thank you. There's a motion and a second, and I'll turn it over to Senior Planner Teeny.
Mayor and council, good evening. The, the item before you is an amendment to the Turner Track overlay zoning district. The Turner Track overlay zoning district has special requirements within the zoning district, specifically the one that we're talking about tonight. The one, the requirement that is presently in the Turner Track overlay zone is that garages should be flush, essentially flush with the house or the structure, the principal structure that's within or on the lot. What that means is that the garage and the front facade of the house, or maybe even a porch that's on there, are all in one plane. It means that the garage does not stick out beyond the house and create what we call the snout look, or the house protruding out beyond the house. The recommenda, or the proposal here before you is brought before us by John Edwards and Grandview Heights Development. They are requesting that an amendment be made to the Turner Track overlay zoning district to allow for garages to follow the same standards that are found within the rest of the community. Within the rest of the community, so all properties, residential properties outside of the Turner Track, a garage is allowed to stick out at least twelve feet beyond the front facade of the house. It can be less than that, but you can go up to twelve feet from beyond the front facade of the house. The, going back a little bit, remember we have a Turner Track plan, as well as a comprehensive plan. The Turner Track plan really is the guiding document for what rules and regulations we have within the Turner Track overlay zone. The Turner Track plan provides guidance and really focuses on walkability, pedestrian orientation, and when you have a garage that sticks beyond the house, the garage or the auto-oriented portion of the house is now the primary feature within the, within that lot versus the front door, which is the personal and pedestrian-oriented side of the, of the portion of the house. The section within the zoning code is actually a carryover from the 2001 adoption of the Turner Track plan and regulations. So this is something that's been in the, in the plan for some time. If you remember, during the adoption of the Unified Development Code in the 2010, the council and the citizens of Laramie looked at the Turner Track guidelines at that time, so prior to 2010, as kind of a standard to look at for the rest of the community. As we move forward with the adoption of the UDC, you saw those changes reflected in the UDC that we have today, except for that one portion remained within the Turner Track. So it is one of the portions that was specifically left in within the Turner Track overlay zone was to not make changes to the garage facade and how far it protrudes. What we have today is we do have a recommendation of denial based upon conformance with the Turner Track plan. The Planning Commission considered this item as well. They, to be fair to the applicant, they struggled with what really is applicable within the Turner Track? Is the Turner Track, in allowing a garage to stick out twelve feet, six feet, three feet, reduce or eliminate the pedestrian orientation within the Turner Track plan? So that discussion was definitely had by Planning Commission. It was something they, they ultimately did recommend denial of. Right now, we have a situation where, within the Turner Track, we have more homes and more single-family residential development that is to occur. Up until this point, based upon our records, we've got 141 houses that have been developed under this, under this requirement. We have a portion still of the Grandview Heights Development, which is the applicant, that would, that would benefit from an amendment change if, if you were to see that occur, and that was recommended by council. You also have remaining land that's owned not only by the city, but also owned by private developers within the Turner Track that either would benefit or not benefit, depending upon how you look at it of the change. But it would be something that would definitely affect other properties beyond just the current development that you see within the Turner Track today. What staff has done, though, is even though there is a recommendation of denial, you have an ordinance before you. The ordinance before you is an, is an ordinance that reflects the request of the applicant. The request of the applicant is actually a fairly simple request. By eliminating the section within the Turner Track overlay zone, what it does is it eliminates any specific residential requirements for the Turner Track except for those that are found under the UDC and found elsewhere within the residential zoning districts in the community. If you were to move forward with a recommendation of approval, meaning that it meets the conditions of the Turner Track plan, you would then be able to use this ordinance that's here before you to eliminate the twelve-foot, or eliminate the zero foot essentially, or the front facade being parallel, and allow all residential homes within the Turner Track to follow the standards, which would be a twelve-foot, twelve-foot protrusion. There, there's other sections within the UDC that would apply by eliminating this section, but they're all similar items that are already being followed under the PUD of Grandview Heights, which is replication of facades and a few other things. So really, the essence of what you have in the ordinance is by eliminating the section as proposed here would allow for that twelve-foot protrusion. The recommendation is, though, to deny, so if you are to make a recommendation of approval or some other recommendation, it would, you would need to show us how that conforms to the Turner Track plan. So I would be happy to answer any questions. I know the applicant is here as well. I should note, the applicant has provided not only a letter from himself stating some of the reasons and explanation as to why this is important to them, they've also provided some information from realtors and developers that deal with those house plans specifically within the, within the Turner Track. I'll also mention one of the, one of the primary factors of why a garage protrudes out beyond a house is to allow for more square footage within the house on a lot. It allows for alternative floor plans, so. As I said, I think I, I can answer any questions, and as I mentioned, the applicant is here. I think you, Churis, would like to say some things as well, so.
Councilor Hanson?
Thank you, Your Honor. I think it says, "single-family units," freestanding single-family units, right? Because I observe that in the area south of the old Albertsons, there are twin homes with protruding double garages out front, and then you have an itty-bitty house part facing the street and this huge double garage. And, and I've been in one of those. They're very dark and dingy in the, in the front part because most of it is garage in the front. And so I wonder whether throwing out this, or eliminating this, you know, having everything even, and allowing these, these front garages to protrude, whether that includes double garages that then almost reduce the house part to virtually nothing out front. That, I think, I find very disturbing somehow. I don't like that particularly. But if we're talking about a single garage entrance and the house itself is wide enough, the rest of the house is wide enough, if that's what I understand, I could support eliminating, you know, that they have to be even. So I'm not quite sure what we would be eliminating here in this particular instance.
Thank you very much, Your Honor.
Mayor and council, the, first off, the, the change as proposed, if you were to go with a recommendation of approval, what would happen within the Turner Track, this applies to single-family homes. Many of those that you're talking about are duplexes. That does not apply to those, to those units. On a single-family home, under the UDC regulations, there are some limits on the width of the garage, but it would allow you to still to protrude it up to twelve feet out. The ones you're specifically talking about, there's a lot in that area. I don't know if they were done prior to the UDC, after the UDC. Up, at this point, if you can put the garage up to twelve feet beyond the front plan of the house, and that would, if you were to recommend approval, that would be then allowed also within the Turner Track. Does that...
Would it include a double garage? I guess that would be my question.
You, you can have single dub, or double garages. Yeah, you can even have a three-car garage. It's, it would allow any of that portion of those garage to go twelve, twelve feet out. Correct.
Councilor Schuster?
Thank you. I'm the liaison. We were both at the meeting. The discussion was quite, quite a discussion because at one time, I thought they were gonna do, I'm gonna call it a negotiation, where they said, "Well, if you give us six-foot protrusion," but the amendment never came on the floor. And like he said, I walked my neighborhood, walked about five blocks looking for this, and I found ten homes that way, and all of the ten homes, because then I walked down the alley and was looking over fences, I'm glad I didn't get turned in, but all of them had a family room addition behind the garage. So when you put the garage back with the level of the house, now all of a sudden, the garage is the entire length of the house, and when you brought it out, then, like he said in here, you then gained square footage for something behind the garage. I went up to the UL Laboratories Open House, and I noticed there was a, one that had the protrusion out there, and then it backpedaled the third stall of the garage, like you said, to even with the face of the house. And again, it was a brand-new house at approximately Twenty-First and Beaufort, and the same thing, they had a family room on the back of it. So absolutely what we're talking about is, can we put another room, whether it be a family room, a bedroom, or something like that? Do we want to consider a negotiation where we say, "Twelve foot, absolutely not"? Are we gonna consider six foot or something like that? So that was everything that was discussed at the planning session meeting. So the contractors were in favor of this because then they could offer more floor pan, plans for people living out there. And it, it was not a perfect vote. It didn't pass by a perfect thing, so there was a huge amount of both directions. So just, just wanted to report on it. I'm not gonna make an amendment on it. If someone feels strongly about it, I will, I will let them do so, but I will let other people speak now. Thank you.
Thank you. And by the way, I err it in that you introduced this, and I should have allowed you to speak first, so I apologize for that.
No problem, no problem.
Councilor Henry, and then I'll go to Councilor Somerville.
Okay, I have a few questions, and then I just forgot a question, but anyway, I'll just go with what I wrote down. Okay, so the twelve-foot protrusion, how long is a car? A regular vehicle? Or how about?
Hang on to that one.
One of these trucks that has a long bed and a cab?
Why don't we go to Councilor Schuster on that? Because he's in that business.
All right, thank you.
A crew cab pickup with a long bed is up to twenty-eight feet long. An average car is probably nineteen to twenty feet long.
Okay.
Except for mine.
Okay.
We said an average car.
Okay, so what is the setback from the street to the front facade of the house? From the sidewalk, excuse me? That's, that's a teeny question.
Mayor and council, it depends upon the zoning district.
Okay, in, in a single-family, in a zoning district such as this?
You're looking, you know, twenty, fifteen to twenty-five. So I mean, you could have all three of those ranges depending upon the zoning district that you're located within.
Or twenty-five. So if we extended a garage into that setback, there would not be room to park a car in the driveway, is that correct? Unless you had a smart car?
Mayor and council, you would not, under this provision, you still would not be able to extend it into the setback. You would only be able to extend, you're only extending the garage beyond, twelve feet beyond the front facade of the house. So in the instance of a house being placed on a lot, as a developer, you have to accommodate not only for the setback, but you also have to accommodate for, one, the space in front of the garage, which is a minimum twenty feet in the city of Laramie, the garage twelve feet maybe at a maximum, and then the front facade of the house. The house doesn't, the house typically is never set on the actual setback. It's usually set much further back than, than the actual required setback. In other areas, not including in the Turner Track, often the garage is located in a, in a location closer to the setback, but usually it's not, not on the setback, so.
So then you're, if you, if we did extend the garage, it's not encroaching into the setback?
Correct. It would not be able to encroach into the setback.
Okay. Those are my questions.
Councilor Somerville?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So I don't have strong feelings one way or the other, but we do have a Turner Track plan update on our work session list already. And if we're, if I understand correctly, the denial motion is coming forward because it does not concur with the Turner Track plan. So wouldn't it make more sense to consider an amendment like this to the Turner Track plan when we're doing the rest of the Turner Track plan update? So if we're gonna change it, we should change it in the plan first.
Let me go to Mr. Teeny with that. There's two parts to this if it were to pass, correct? If this were to pass...
As a denial.
As a denial.
No, if this were to pass as not a denial, but as a, as an accepted practice, it would also have to go for an, it would have to, also, the Turner Track plan would have to be changed.
Mayor and council, the, what, what we are discussing about the Turner Track plan is the Turner Track plan focuses on pedestrian orientation and this idea of a live-work community. The snout-nose garages is one of the items within the development of the Turner Track plan that was said detracted from that. If you, if the council believes that it does not detract from that... If you, if the council believes that it does not detract from that, you wouldn't necessarily have to amend the plan to, to make this change.
Okay.
If we went beyond this in a residential-type development standards, yeah, you probably would start getting into that realm. This, we've determined, if, if council believes that it, that it does meet the plan objectives still, then it could be approved.
Thank you. Counselor Henry?
So, I thought of my other question. What was, what was the vote at Planning Commission? You said it was?
It was four yes, one, or four yes to deny. So, remember, this was a denial motion. So, four yes to deny, one no, and two absent.
Okay.
Okay. I actually have some comments to make on this, but I think what I'd like to do is open the applicant first, and then I may change my comments. So, I know we have, and if you would identify yourself with the record, please.
Honorable Mayor and members of City Council, John Edwards with Grandview Heights. If I could begin by handing out a couple of open space exhibits that you've likely already seen in the, in the packet that was administered to you. I understand there was a little confusion with some of the supplementary materials, so I just wanted to be sure that you guys saw this as a reference as I, as I spoke.
Yes, sir.
Absolutely. So, I'd like to begin by reading a section of the Laramie Municipal Code, Section 15.02.050. This calls for the Unified Development Code to be amended from time to time so as to become or remain consistent with the comprehensive plan, and should be regularly reviewed, evaluated, and amended if necessary based on private and city economic conditions, vision for the community, changing planning and zoning principles, frequent difficulty in implementing or enforcing any specific standard or standards, or changes in the state, federal, or case law. Honorable Mayor and members of City Council, we have an issue with an unnecessary restriction that is negatively impacting the quality of our neighborhood, the home builders and industry professionals, and most importantly, the current and future homeowners in Grandview Heights. Like any conscious and responsible developer, we wish to provide the most modern and quality neighborhood possible. Drive through any modern master-planned community around the nation, especially in zoning districts with higher design standards, and you will be hard-pressed to find even one project which requires the front facade of the home to be flush with the garage. It doesn't make sense from an aesthetic standpoint because it creates a situation where every home starts to look the same. It creates what is known as a cookie-cutter community. Neighborhoods are supposed to feel as dynamic as possible while staying within a universally, universally-accepted design standard. Additionally, and perhaps most importantly, having a flush-front garage façade combo doesn't make sense from the home builder, homeowner point of view. It robs the homeowner of a full additional room in their floor plan and demands that the builder spend extra cost in design and construction to accommodate the design. These costs then get passed directly back to the homeowner. As Mr. Teeny mentioned, I reached out to the real estate community, and I had a Mr. Dan Brain from Gem City Real Estate draft a letter. As I stated before, I'm not sure if you guys have seen that, so I'll spare you most of it, but I would like to read a, a couple of notes from there. So, he begins by saying, "I've contacted several builders who have given me permission to forward their names and phone numbers. They all agree that this guideline creates an extreme open-floor-plan design challenge, and they have all looked for other subdivisions to build." Ed Rust with Lifestyle Homes has 27 established successful floor plans, only four of which comply to this current guideline. Mr. Rob Shutterly of Pheasant Ridge Construction states that he has no floor plans that comply to this guideline and has, for this reason, avoided Grandview Heights. Kevin Nelson with Summit Structures says, "I have built very few homes that comply to this guideline." And Darren Robertson of Sage Homes, who was our, our most successful home builder up until this last year, is no longer going to build in Grandview Heights and Laramie, citing not being able to build our, our biggest bestselling floor plans is baffling. We have never understood this particular restriction, but with the adoption of the UDC, which borrowed directly from the National Industry Design Standards, we are now at a total loss and feel damaged as to why we are the only project in Laramie that is being held to it. When we asked this question to the city upon initiation of this proposal, the answers we were given were, one, the guideline was left in place, so we are obligated to enforce it, which I understand. Number two, the Turner Tract was always intended to be a pedestrian-oriented community. These answers don't make sense to us and are insufficient, especially when weighed against the problems and issues this garage restriction is creating. We discussed this item at, at Planning Commission for over 45 minutes, and they had many questions and struggled to provide reasoning along with city staff. Mr. Schuster, thank you for your report on that, just so we're all on the same page and, and we understand that even though the recommendations are as such, this, this is a sensitive topic, and, and I appreciate your, your input there. I am here tonight to seek hard, logical answers and to petition to have this section of code either modified or removed altogether. The Planning Commission staff report references Page 17 of the Turner Tract Plan, which states that "conditions and restrictions will ensure that the streets and public spaces will be functional, attractive, pleasant, and safe places for people." Chapter 5 of the Comprehensive Plan states that the new neighborhoods should include a pedestrian-friendly environment. The staff report goes on to say that aside from these few references, guidance within the planning documents is limited. Further down and under staff's official recommendation, it states that with no new information or direction from the Planning Commission or City Council on this topic, staff believes it should be up to the Planning Commission and City Council to approve this request. Grandview Heights is debatably the most pedestrian-friendly community in Laramie. Please review the open-space exhibit, which shows the extensive trail system running through the heart of the neighborhood and connects to all surrounding amenities. This in addition to the city sidewalks on both sides of the interior streets. I'd like to point out that we designed this way before we were even conscious of the Turner Tract or the newly adopted UDC. Somebody, please tell me how allowing the industry-standard minimal offset in the front garage design makes Grandview Heights less pedestrian-friendly. This proposal is an enhancement to the Turner Tract by allowing a more dynamic neighborhood, where homeowners can customize to a certain degree with no threat to pedestrian orientation. I'd like to point out that the 25-foot front setback line does not change. The garage nor the front facade will not be allowed, excuse me, the garage nor the front facade will not be allowed any closer to the street than it already is. The 25 feet is ample room, again, 25 feet on both sides, is ample room to create pleasant streetscapes. A standard garage is 24 feet in length to accommodate a full-size vehicle. We are not asking for, nor do we want, full garages sticking out in the front of the homes. This is what creates what is known as the snout look. Independent of the UDC or Turner Tract, we guard against this in our internal covenants and always have. We are also not asking for identical homes to be built next to one another in any fashion. We do not allow, we do not allow this, nor does, nor does the UDC. We are asking for the same modern industry-design standards afforded to the rest of the city, which is up to a 12-foot offset in the garage, which is half of a 24-foot standard garage length. Again, our aim is to create and provide the most attractive, modern, and functional neighborhood possible. Not all builders will use the full 12 feet, but it will give everyone much-needed and appropriate options. Allowing homeowners to customize up to a certain point is a win-win scenario between them and the city. The city gets a more, a more dynamic, noncookie cutter type of community, and the homeowner gets to build their dream home. There have been zero calls or letters from the public to the city on this issue. There was no one from the public who showed up to speak at the Planning Commission meeting, and as of yet, I don't see anyone here tonight. Grandview Heights is approximately 50% built out, and we have the collective opportunity now to logically remedy this situation before it's too late. One of our last and final concerns is that with new single-family developments that come online in the future in the Turner Tract, this issue, this issue will undoubtedly present itself again with different parties altogether. If it is in fact changed somewhere down the line, we will have been handicapped by it for the duration of our project, only to have others freed from it at a later date. Additionally, imagine if you do keep it in place. Do you really want every single-family home in the entire Turner Tract to look the same in 15 or 20 years? Does this not go directly against the vision of the original Turner Tract? The new UDC design standards were thoughtfully drafted by seeking a higher standard for Laramie as a whole and borrowing successful models from both the National Industry and the original Turner Tract guidelines. The research and work has been done on what is universally accepted and what community values are still protected. We are seeking the same allowances afforded to the rest of the community under these appropriate standards. I greatly appreciate your time and consideration in this matter, and I look forward to a logical resolution. I'm available for any questions.
Should we have questions? Yes, Counselor Henry.
So, what is the, what is the standard footage of the elevation of the house that contains the garage? In other words, the, the depth of the house?
The standard square footage of, of the residential?
No, the, the foot, okay, so you're saying that your 24-foot garage isn't big, is, is encroaching on your living area? So, and you're saying that there's, so is a house depth 24 feet?
No, ma'am. I was, I was stating the 24-foot standard length because many communities that haven't adopted the UDC, et cetera, still allow a full, standard, front-load garage to extend past the front facade of the home. And, and this, this change would be a 12-foot.
What is the, what is your acceptable, what is your standard depth of a typical house, single-family home?
It, it does vary, but I would say roughly 40 to 60 feet.
40 to 60. And, okay, thank you.
Vice Mayor?
So, I think you're making some real valid points here, and I hear what you're saying, although I'm not necessarily inclined to make changes now. And I'm, and I'm wondering, and maybe counsel can help me, or, or Planning, or, or our Assistant City Manager, in terms of timing of this. If, if we have a Turner Tract work session coming up, if, if we maybe flesh out some of these ideas a little more in a work session, if we postpone this, I mean, what are some thoughts on that? And would it, would it damage or upset current plans' development for this construction season? I mean, are you, are you looking to start a project spring, summer of '17? Is, is that what we're preparing for? Are you like, "I got to get this done now"?
Well, honorable Mayor, through you, Mrs. Pierce, we have lost, I can't give you a number on actual customers that have driven through, but I can tell you three specific customers that a builder has lost already this year because of this, specifically because of this restriction. So, it, time is of the essence here. And, and to add a little bit to what you were saying, and maybe I've unders, I've misunderstood a little bit, my understanding is that this piece of the original Turner Tract is actually part of the UDC. And, and is that correct? And the UD, so, so I appreciate the discussion about changes to the, the Turner Tract, but this, this is an amendment to the UDC, is it not?
I mean, I...
Mayor and counsel, the, this section is found within the zoning portion of the Unified Development Code. This has been in code since 2001, since the adoption of the original Turner Tract Plan. So, it's been under the old code as well as this code, so.
Counselor Schuster?
The one thing I want to state is, is we say it's in the UDC, but inside the city of Laramie, except for the Turner Tract, we can do this. We can't do it in the Turner Tract. And that was in the original statement of mine. They're just asking that the Turner Tract be stated the exact same as the rest of the city of Laramie.
Counselor Hanson?
Thank you, Honor. Were we to allow the change, is there any, I'm coming back to my original question, any proportion addressed as to the whole width of the frontage of the house and how much can protrude? You know, I'm coming back to the question of the double garage and just the small part of house left facing the street. Is that addressed in any way, or would that be addressed in any way, shape, or form with such a protrusion? Whether it be 12 feet, or 24 feet, or whatever, you know, I, I'm interested in, how, how wide can the garage be as far as the rest of the house is concerned?
Mr. Mayor, through you, Mr. Hanson, I believe you're referencing the percentage of the garage versus the percentage of the front facade.
Correct.
My, my initial response to you is that perhaps could be found in the UDC. We don't have any specific provisions to account for that percentage right now. I believe we do in our, in our PUD handbook, but I can't, I can't quote that to you right now. But my, my hunch is, and perhaps Mr. Teeny can help out, along with the UDC, along with this garage discussion, there's discussion about not allowing duplicate facades, and my hunch is that there, there might be some information in what?
He's already standing behind you. He may have something up there.
Mayor and Member Hanson, there, there is a percentage. If you were to go with an approval, as, as it's, as it's in the ordinance, the garages within the Turner Tract would then fall under the design guidelines for residential structures within the rest of the UDC and the rest of the community, which is found in Chapter 15, 14. What it does talk about is there are certain percentages that you have to meet, and the percentage is garage width versus the rest of the facade width. So, it is limited. So, depending upon how wide your lot is, will limit whether you can achieve a two- or three-car garage. So, you are, it is, it is taken into account here. It doesn't allow for a 12-car garage and a little door to go into the house behind the 12 cars. Okay? So, your worst-case scenario will not come to fruition, okay?
What, what is the proportion?
So, in, in code, you have a, you have proportions that are, for a single-family dwelling, street-facing, so the street-facing garage doors cannot comprise up more than 45% of the facade width of each dwelling, or 18 feet of that dwelling, whichever is less.
Okay.
So, so the lesser of those. And an attached three-car garage door should not comprise more than 55% or 27 feet, whichever is less. So, so you have two- and three-car garages that are, that provide that facade difference.
Doesn't even address single-car garage.
Single-car garage, really, you really just don't even run into it. This doesn't know problem.
Sure. Thank you.
Counselor Schumway?
Thank you, Honor. This is an interesting topic. I, I think it's interesting also, the council is trying to pretend like we're builders, but we know. You know, what? You know, what the public... I know, we have one that is. But for... To me, it seems like that this proposal is one that they want to add square footage to the floor plans that are possible for somebody. I don't have a... You know, I would not want this council to tell anybody that you can't have a flat roof, only that's not too smart in Laramie. I don't think they ought to say every house ought to have pillars, or they can only have windows with so many square feet, or that they can't have porches. And for someone to say that we... You know, Grandview Heights has done a great job of having, you know, really attractive homes in this community. I don't think they're going to change their building methods and try to, you know, say we're just going to jam everything in that we can and try to make a quick buck doing this. I really believe that we should, you know, keep a standard that is reasonable, but to me, it's not unreasonable to say that it's going to be a varied appearance, instead of, you know, what it says, cookie cutter. So right now, I don't think I can support denial, because I think that that's up to the consumer and the builder and the community. Obviously, a lot of people in this community that came forward, anytime we tried to do anything that changed the look of what they had, no one's coming forward. So they don't seem to be in any heartburn over the possibilities of Mr. Edwards' development to make some homes that have a garage that may be a different set, you know, from what they have. So for now, I'm going to vote no. I'm going to vote no on the denial.
On the no.
Yeah, on the no, on the no. I'll also tell you that if double negative makes that a positive. So hopefully, this is a positive for that community. I would... Personally, I just don't think that I want to be telling them how to develop their housing project and try to sell it to the consumer with something that is not acceptable for them, and also the builders that just can't work with this, these limitations that we're trying to place on them.
I know, I've got two other counselors. I'm kind of chomping at the bit to...
I have a quick question.
Sure, go ahead.
So my question is, trying to be fair, so you said that Grandview Heights is about fifty percent built out?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. So my first question is, if it's fifty percent built out, why didn't we hear about this problem when you guys started, or much earlier in the process? Have you guys been to the city before with this, trying to get this changed? I've only been on council for three years, so maybe it's happened before I was here.
Sure. Well, okay, I've written a couple of letters, one before the planning commission meeting and one before this city council meeting. And this... In my first letter, we are quality-oriented developers. We don't have a lot of issues with restrictions. We have a lot of our own built-in internal restrictions in our covenants and in our PUD handbook. Really, this has been prompted now because careful consideration was given to the UDC, the community of Laramie as a whole wanted higher design standards. We feel that those were adequate, that made a lot of sense, those were put in place, and yet this one sentence from the Turner tract was left within there. And that was two years ago or so.
Yeah, six years ago.
Six years ago? Two thousand?
Ten.
Two thousand and ten. This has presented itself now for those reasons, but specifically, we've been more damaged by it the last two years. We've had several comments from the builders in the real estate community and several private conversations with people that love the Turner tract area, really excited about the new high school, but couldn't build the home that they wanted to build there. So some of it is the new high school. We've seen some additional interest from that, and people come in excited, they hear about this, and some of them go elsewhere.
I have one quick follow-up to that. So my concern is we're about... So I appreciate the answer on... I can understand there's been some new interest in the neighborhood, but I do have concern in this fifty percent built out about all the people that have already built houses there with these design standards. And do they... Would they have a concern about a significant change, or maybe it's not that significant, a change in the look to the neighborhood? Have you held a neighborhood meeting out there to get input from the homeowners that are already actually out there and have already invested money in those houses right now?
No, I haven't. And, Mr. Mayor, through you, and I've received nothing but positive feedback from the folks that are already in their homes in there. They're really happy with their homes there. And in relation to your comment about the public, again, public notice has been in the paper. There was nobody at the planning commission meeting. There's nobody here tonight. Frankly, other than this one item left over in the Turner tract, I don't see what the outcry is here for a twelve-foot extension. We're talking from me to essentially that clock right there. It's a width of a roll of carpet. And yes, it breaks up the cookie-cutter look on the outside. It creates a more dynamic look, but the majority of that value is felt with the extra room that the homeowners are allowed, and their floor plans in the interior of the home.
Thank you.
Counselor Schuster.
No, go ahead first. Mine's to the attorney anyway.
Okay. You know, I'm probably... I know I've been here longer than our planning department right now, but I remember when this came about, and I was on the design committee that actually created these design standards for the Turner tract, and I don't believe it was two thousand... It was the original Turner tract plan which goes to two thousand and one, not two thousand and ten, okay? The development code wasn't even an imagination at that time. The reason why this came about is we wanted to make the Turner tract, or it was felt that the Turner tract should be someplace special. It should be the best, and the best design, and it should be a leader within our community or subdivision. And it created quality standards, and it created design standards that had never been done in Laramie. And it was only done in the Turner tract. As it turned out, when the development code came in, they actually adopted all of the standards with the exception of that one. The reason why that standard was put in there at the time, there was a concern that, as you had stated, that the facade in a lot of the neighborhoods, particularly with the smaller lots, and particularly with the multifamily, the row-housing-type lots, all you saw was garages down the street, okay? I agree with the concept that this has nothing to do with pedestrian-friendly community. It has something to do with, as far as the aesthetic value and what pedestrians are looking at as they're taking a walk down the street, but it has nothing to do with the mobility of our pedestrian-friendly community. Now, I'll say this. When it happened, I was an active builder at the time, and I am very, very aware of the challenges that you're talking about. And I thought to myself at the time, this is going to be very, very interesting, because I knew that you go through a plan book, the majority of plans are going to have a garage protruding out in front of the house. Now, that doesn't mean the whole garage is protruding out, but oftentimes... And actually, it's an appropriate setback, because whether the garage is in front of it or in back of it, as long as you have some kind of a division within the front of your house, it's attractive-looking versus just a plain, okay? And I'll use Counselor Hanson's example of Don Patton's townhouses over there, okay? Those were cluster homes. They were six to... Attached, six at a time. I think the lot size at that time was thirty feet wide. The garage spacing was either twenty or twenty-two feet, and all you had is eight feet left over so that you had an entryway that was very, very small, okay? What we're referring to here is single-family lots that have to have, and if it hasn't changed, the setback on an R1 is fifteen foot, some combination. So you've got separation between houses, and it's a different situation compared to row-housing. The other aspect to it is, like has been stated, if the garage is only protruding four feet, or six feet, or eight feet, or perhaps even twelve feet, aesthetically, as long as the proportions are right, it's okay. It looks good, okay? It's only when that whole garage is out in front and there's very little house behind it. So I sympathize with what's going on. I think you can design good houses and good plans, and we've got enough other varieties within our requirements, such as not having repeated-type home and so forth and so on. I understand where you're coming from, and I can appreciate it, and frankly, if it's done correctly, I don't see any reduction in quality or any reduction in aesthetic value than if, in fact, your garage is further back. By the way, I don't agree with the argument that it's reducing the size of the homes, because you've got plenty of depth, you can keep going back if you want and create more home in back. You just don't have as much frontage on your home. But having said that, I also am kind of interested in the idea of coming up with a compromise and perhaps only allowing six or eight feet to see how that works. And I'd be interested... This really wasn't a question, but I am interested in your perception of if we did say go six or eight feet, would it work, or is it a waste of time to create an amendment of that nature?
Sure, sure. Mr. Mayor, our stance on this, and we've talked about this, we thought a lot about creating different options in footage offsets. The main reason that we'd like to ask for the twelve is that's a full room in many homes. Eight feet, ten feet, anything less than that, you're cutting it really close. A twelve feet gives, you know, admittedly, a smaller bedroom, but there are twelve-foot by twelve-foot bedrooms in some homes. So that was our stance. And from our point of view, twelve feet versus eight feet is not that much difference, and I would make the argument that no matter what, up to twelve feet, this is an improvement for aesthetics, for dynamics of the neighborhood. So that's our stance. We'd certainly be willing to entertain an alternative to this, but I'd like to have a logical discussion about it, given that the twelve feet is a full room, and that how much difference does four feet, i.e. eight feet versus twelve feet, actually make in the aesthetics?
And the last question I had, a lot of homes today have front porches on them, where the front... The whole front of the house will have a porch or something along that line. I assume the setback requirement does not include the porches. It has to be the living area of the home and not the porches. Am I correct on that?
No, porches included.
Porches are included on that.
Mayor, Council, what we consider has to be integral to the actual physical house. So if a porch is... The roof's integrated, and it's a porch that's on the front like you see in many of these houses, that's the front facade. It acts like the front facade. Where we would see a difference in that is if someone like did some sort of add-on just to try to accommodate this, and it's not integral to the rest of the design of the house, that would not be the front facade. So we evaluate that on a case-by-case basis in the architecture that's provided and the elevations that are submitted at building permit, so.
By the way, having said that, to me, it makes it more palatable to have a six or an eight-foot setback only because you can create it with your porches and so forth. Turn it over to Counselor Schuster.
My question, I don't know if it's for the city attorney or what. If we vote no on this, do we need to come back with an amendment? Or would you prefer an amendment on the floor now on it?
You could do it either way. Mayor, Counselor Schuster, you could do it either way. You can, if you voted. Do the double negative, I guess. At that point, someone would have to put a positive motion on the floor, so.
Yeah.
That's why I'm asking.
You can make it either way. You can vote it down and then make your motion, however you want to make your motion. You can make it the exact opposite of this one, or you could tailor it to eight feet, ten feet, six feet, whatever you want.
So I'm confused. The simplest way to do it would be to vote this motion down, and then entertain, and then another motion, and... Well, that would automatically bring the motion forward as a positive motion, or we would have to create a new motion?
You'd have to create a new motion.
So the simplest way is to vote this motion?
I think so.
If, in fact, that's the direction we wanted to go in, and then do an amendment, and then bring a positive motion forward, and then do an amendment to the positive motion.
I wonder how far the protrusion would be.
Yes. Yes, Vice Mayor.
So it's not that I disagree, and I think it's great we're talking about this, but I would much rather we postpone and talk about this in a work session to flush some of these ideas out a little more, get our planning folks involved a little more, and not try to do this on the fly. Not that it's totally a bad idea, but I'm getting a little apprehensive about six feet, twelve feet, whatever the heck it is.
Let me suggest this. If we decided to go in that direction, I don't believe this is related to the Turner tract plan. Frankly, we did a revision of the Turner tract plan and never talked about changing the architectural standards at that time. We talked about changing... We talked about what the overall plan was going to look like concerning how much commercial, how much multifamily, how much single-family, but we didn't get into this type of detail. What we could do, though, is if this were to be turned down... If it's turned down, it's done, okay? If it were to be... In other words, if the motion goes forward, it's done. If the motion fails, we could... And it were to pass on first reading, we could schedule a works session prior to second reading, and then have second reading, if that would be the council's pleasure. I know that's a lot of ifs.
And that would be a way to do it.
That would be a way to do it, and keep it moving forward so that it's just not... Yes, Counselor Shamway.
Schuster.
Excuse me.
It's okay. Would we need three readings then to make a positive one? Okay, then, thank you. Because then we could start by... We could start by cutting it in half, and then if anybody wants to amend it later, we could start with that, because I'm just not sure where people want to go with this. And I think, excuse me, the three readings and being able to work with it a little bit is probably the best idea, because we're not passing it tonight. But if we go forward, we can then... I'm going to use the word negotiate, instead of just saying it's all or nothing.
I'll say this, too, along the same subject. We have neighborhoods all over Laramie, newer neighborhoods, Riches Park, Alta Vista, Kerry and Paul Greaser subdivision down by the... Taking a drive through those subdivisions and looking at how it has worked with the twelve-foot setback would help all of council come to a conclusion of, yes, this is a good thing, or no, this is not a good thing. It's hard to visualize it if you're not a builder. Counselor Hanson.
Something positive, again, that occurred to me, because I've seen it in other communities, is if you let the garage move out and you do have a front porch, it creates a nice private privacy area, because you have two walls there for the... One wall this way at ninety degrees for a nice porch that is, at least at one side, shielded from the neighbors, you know? From the wind and from the neighbors, right? And so that makes for a nice addition. Probably still have to talk to the neighbors on the other side who may have a porch there, but I think that it has an attractive part to it. Your Honor, you mentioned porches, you know, and that's what occurred to me at the time. There's something very attractive about it. And for that, of course, you probably could use twelve feet as an adequate space to protrude out.
Thank you. Counselor Shamway.
It's my understanding if we... Item number twelve, if we approve denial, we're done with twelve, we move on to thirteen.
Correct.
So we'd have to start over on three readings.
Yeah.
On the...
That's what I understood.
No, I think if we vote for this motion as presented, this subject's done.
Right.
No work session, no nothing. It's done.
Well, we could set a work session, but...
Yeah. It's gone, right? The limitation is gone, isn't that it?
Well, it's business as usual, as it is now.
The current standard is preserved.
The current status of what we're doing now would prevail. Yes, Counselor Sauerfield.
Well, the fact that we've been discussing this for quite some time now, would it not be prudent to put a motion on the floor to postpone, with some direction to staff to come back with a couple of options in two weeks with some correctly-worded options? Because that's... I'm with the Vice Mayor. I don't want to try to amend the code on the fly here, so if anybody... It's just a suggestion.
Counselor Henry.
But then, does it have to go back to the planning commission?
No, not if we keep it.
No.
No, because they're done with it.
Yeah, if we postpone it.
Only if we ask... Only if we ask to reconsider.
Not if we continue.
Yes.
Mr. Mayor, through you, thank you all very much for your time, first of all, tonight and your input. If I could just finish with a couple statements here, going back to the background a little bit in Mr. Teeny's staff report, I just want to read one paragraph here. Following debate by Planning Commission and City Council during the adoption process of the UDC in 2009 and 2010, it was decided that the Turner Track garage standard would not be adopted citywide and the existing garage provision would only remain in the Turner Track. Multiple variations for projecting garages were proposed for the rest of the city, five feet, 10 feet, et cetera, with 12 feet being settled on. 12 feet was settled on after Planning Commissioner Dave Palakis, who was serving as a member of the Steering Committee, indicated that 12 feet was an industry standard length for a projecting garage. So I wanted to add that. I also wanted to reemphasize that not only in the UDC, but our internal covenants and our PUD handbook, we're very restrictive on which homes can go next to each other, certainly no duplicates. So if you do consider this in any fashion, or depending on how things go tonight and you're considering the 12-foot extension, please keep in mind, there's very little, and take a tape measure out. And I really like the suggestion of driving through what was built to get an idea of what that 12 feet does, because it's very minimal and yet it provides a lot of value to the homeowner. And that's all I have to say.
Thank you. Yes, Mr. Teeny.
Mayor and Council, just based upon a little bit of the discussion that's been had up to this point, you do have a resolution, or I mean, an ordinance that's in your packet that if you were to go opposite of the staff recommendation there, would allow you to pass a 12-foot, essentially allowing 12-foot protrusion, which then you could amend later at following meetings. We are going to, we will have a scheduled work session, or not work session, public hearing on the 21st, which is your next meeting, along with a second reading, is what we were anticipating, depending upon maybe what direction we receive. If you were to fall within something, I'll just say in the middle of, so less than 12 feet, but not flush or zero, we may have to tinker with the language of that, but through that direction, that's something that we can do as far as providing an ordinance, an amended ordinance, that would be able to do that. Work session, I will just note, once again, there's very little direction. It all comes down to the number that council believes is appropriate. I'll say that a work session, you're going to receive very little guidance from staff in terms of what should be allowed within the community on that. We have allowed 12 feet within the rest of the community. The Turner Track has a higher standard, which is zero. So if we're going to go somewhere in the middle, we really haven't had those discussions. And so I'll leave it at that. I think timeline-wise, it's doable. We might have to push a meeting back just to accommodate us staff time to create language if you go with something other than 12. But it's doable. There are numbers within the code that we can modify and find a way to make that work. So I'll just leave it at that, so.
Okay. Council Hanson.
Thank you, Your Honor. I'm looking out the window right now and there's a thunderstorm coming up. And I think what we are forgetting is the briefness, the shortness of our building season around here. And putting this off, and putting this off, of course, takes out quite a bit of your building season, which you have alluded to already as far as other builders are concerned. So I'd love to get this solved, and I don't quite know how to get it solved. I'd love to see a 12-foot, allowing a 12-foot protrusion, and I don't know quite frankly how to do it and be done with it and say, that's what we allow because we allow it in the rest of the town and allow it here.
Call the question.
No.
Well, we can't quite do that, right? Because if we were to vote this down, then it's done, but we have nothing added yet. Then we have to make another motion, don't we?
I want to make an amendment.
Okay. I don't know how you can make an amendment to a negative motion.
Yeah, that's what I...
I just amended to approve instead of deny. Can I do that?
Yes.
Look at the wording, I looked at that. How do we fix the whole wording?
City Attorney.
You can just change the wording now, we can help.
Okay.
Say what you want to do and we'll, I'll draft something. Take a break and we'll draft something during the break.
Okay.
Let's take a break.
Let's take a break and you draft something.
Say what you want to do.
We can't always freelance everything.
I'll ask direction before you take a recess.
If there's any question.
Mayor, my only reason for coming up is to remind the council, if you go in a positive direction, that is to approve an amendment, you do need findings of fact, and that should be incorporated in your motion. Perhaps that's a good argument for the break as well.
Excellent. Thank you. It's a good point. Okay.
Recession.
Why don't we take a recess for five minutes? Back to order again, and I'm going to move on with Councilor Henry.
Okay, I would like to amend the motion to read, I move to approve original ordinance number 1946 based on the fact that the ordinance conforms to the Turner Track overlay.
Second.
Second fight. The Vice Mayor, discussion on the amendment. Yes, Council Somerville.
City Attorney, could you clarify how we went from not complying with the Turner Track overlay to complying with the Turner Track plan?
I'm going to go to Director Hunt.
Or Director Hunt, thank you.
Thank you, I can clarify that. The Turner Track, as the mayor pointed out, has language in it about pedestrian orientation. Now, as in many comprehensive plans, that's a term that's subject to interpretation, and the interpretation of that is prerogative of the elected appointed official. So it would be accurate to say that there's more than one way to approach the concept of pedestrian friendliness. It wouldn't be inappropriate to say that amending this in a positive direction is in opposition to the plan.
Fair enough, thank you.
Thank you. Council Schuster and then Councilor Hanson.
So is the Turner Track going to have the same standards as the rest of the city now?
Yes.
Thank you. Okay, that was my only question because we didn't have any amounts in there. So, thank you very much.
Well, it's in the ordinance.
Yes.
Council Hanson.
Thank you, Your Honor. Unless I miss it, we're sure that your change will permit a protrusion of garages up to whatever, 12 feet, okay? That's implied in there, because I didn't see it anywhere.
It's in the ordinance, if you read the ordinance. They're striking the language.
Okay, all right, okay, thank you.
And I saw our city attorney nodding, so our city attorney agrees with that.
Mayor, Council, yeah, it doesn't say 12 feet, but that's the default, so that's elsewhere in the code.
Okay. Further discussion on this. Okay, other than the applicant, I've never given anyone in the public an opportunity to speak. Is there anyone that would like to speak? Any further comments from the applicant? City Clerk, would you do roll call on the amendment?
Henry.
Yes.
Hanson.
Yes.
Schumway.
Yes.
Schuster.
Yes.
Somerville.
Yes. Vitaly Absent Weaver.
Yes.
Pierce.
Yes.
Palakis.
Yes.
That's eight yeses, zero nos, and one absent, Your Honor.
Thank you. The amendment passes. What's our next procedure? So it's an amendment by substitution?
Correct. So now you vote on the...
Amendmented.
Yes per comment, I guess, and then...
Aren't we done?
Not quite.
That was an amendment.
So that was an amendment. Now we vote on the main motion as amended.
Now we brought it back.
So we brought it back to a positive emotion, a positive motion.
As amended, okay.
All right, so that motion's on the floor. Do we have to bring it to the floor? It's on the floor now. Okay. Further comments by council? Yes, Council Schuster.
So we will have a public hearing before the meeting in two weeks and then vote on it for the second time. Okay, I just wanted to make sure that was... No, he's shaking his head no now.
Mayor and council, the direction that you have and based upon why I included the ordinance within your packet, you'll have second reading as well as the public hearing on the 21st, which is your next meeting. So just almost that.
Two weeks. 21st will be two weeks.
Yeah, two weeks from now. Yeah, correct.
Is that what I said?
Any other comments by council? Councilor Weaver.
Just very quickly, sometimes government is not slow and inflexible. Sometimes we can try to do things quickly to accommodate the private sector sometimes. Thank you, planning staff and city attorney. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Is there anyone from the public wishes to comment? City Clerk, would you do roll call, please?
Schuster.
Yes.
Schumway.
Yes.
Henry.
Yes.
Hanson.
Yes.
Somerville.
Yes.
Vitaly Absent Weaver.
Yes.
Pierce.
Yes.
Palakis.
Yes.
That's eight yeses, zero nos, and one absent, Your Honor.
Thank you. That motion carries. We'll be on the second reading and a public hearing in two weeks. What Councilor Schuster said.
Go, Ryan.
All right, I got to find my place.
It's me again.
Number 13, Councilor Schuster.
Thank you. The title of this is the Coughlin-Pull Mountain Third Edition Eighth Filing Final Plat. Move to approve the Coughlin-Pull Mountain Third Edition Eighth Filing Final Plat based on findings of fact, conclusions of law, acknowledge receipt of financial security from the subdivision's security and improvement, deferral, acknowledgement form, and authorize the mayor and clerk to sign the plat.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Councilor Henry. City staff.
Thank you. Mr. Mayor, City Council, this, as said, this is the eighth filing of the Coughlin-Pull Mountain Third Edition subdivision. The preliminary plat for the subdivision was approved in 2006, consisting of 219 single-family and twin homes to be zoned as an R1 residential district. So as you may have noted through, looking through some of your materials, as this was a preliminary plat from 2006, this is prior to the adoption of the UDC, and so there are a few things that may look a little bit different from the typical types of subdivisions and final plats you may have been seeing as of lately. Please note that also, since this is a final plat, this is just to review and make sure that it is compliant with that preliminary plat, so there can no, there cannot be any conditions or modifications to this final plat, just that it is to be conforming to the preliminary plat from 2006. So as I stated, this is to be zoned as an R1 residential family district, and it is located on the north side of Plain Street between 28th and 30th Street, just north of the Indian Paintbrush Elementary School, as well as just south of the current Cirrus Sky Tech Park. There will be developing a connection to Green Top Street on the western portion of the, I guess, filing and plat, as well as Upland Court on the eastern portion of the plat. Currently, Plain Street is not a part of this specific plat as it was previously established, but there is a current delayed improvement agreement for Plain Street to be completed and finished to city standards within 36 months by the Albany County School District. So that is in place. However, it's not technically a portion of this plat. But all streets within the plat are going to be developed to city code and city standards. Again, because this was preliminary plotted before the adoption of the UDC, there is no requirement for Parkland dedication or any fees in lieu. However, the developers have given several lots for the purpose of a greenway that connects to the Ridgeline Trail up to the northern portion of the site and the plat. We do not require any sort of traffic impact analysis, as well as the stormwater management has been reviewed by the city engineer and approved and will be draining into a large detention pond at Reynolds Street between Bath and 23rd, as well as there is adequate water and sewer service to the area. All the required findings for the final plats have been met currently with the staff report that you've been given at the time of this presentation to Planning Commission. We had not received a finalized improvement agreement and subdivision agreement. We did receive that on June 1st, so that is in place. Again, we have published this and have never received any public comment directly to us, and there were no public comments at the Planning Commission meeting. So if you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them. We do have the applicant and the project engineer here as well.
Questions? Council Hanson.
Just a question or observation. This is exactly north and higher than the Indian Paintbrush School. And when they talked about water, water wouldn't run off and flood out the school down there. They have investigated that, that that wouldn't happen. Or is there enough of a detention pond close by? Because I can't remember what's there. There is a detention pond somewhere, but I thought it's further to the west, to the west.
Mr. Mayor and Councilor Hanson, it has been, the drainage has been studied and it will be draining to, yes, a large detention pond, so there will be no sort of drainage issue.
Is that the drainage pond to the west?
I believe so. I mean, it's between Bath and 23rd Street, so it would be off to the west, that is correct.
Thank you, then I know where it is. Thank you very much.
Other questions?
Yeah.
Thank you. Other comments from council? Let me ask council this. Does any of the council, do you have a question or...
No, I actually have a comment for the applicant.
Please go.
Just for the applicant, I just wanted to express appreciation. I understand that Parkland is not officially required, but I really appreciate the lots that have been dedicated by the Ridgeline to establish the greenway. That's a mighty big gesture, and it's not unnoticed. I appreciate that.
Let me ask council this. Does anybody have a question for the applicant? This is for the applicant's representative. Okay. Any further comments by council? Would the applicant or any member from the public wish to comment on this? You don't have to, I'm just giving you the opportunity. City Clerk, could you do roll call?
Schuster.
Yes.
Weaver.
Yes.
Vitaly Absent Somerville.
Yes.
Schumway.
Yes.
Henry.
Yes.
Hanson.
Yes.
Pierce.
Yes.
Palakis.
Yes.
That's eight yeses, zero nos, and one absent, Your Honor.
That motion carries. Okay, item number 14, Councilor Henry.
Okay. Here we go. So I move to approve City Council Resolution 2016-41, adopting a new planning, zoning, and engineering fee schedule to include modification to fees as reflected in Attachment A and to authorize the mayor and clerk to sign the resolution.
Second. It's motion and second by the Vice Mayor. Senior Planner Teeny.
Mayor and council, before you is a recommendation to adopt a new planning and zoning and engineering fee schedule. The fee schedule that you have before you is the same, almost, it's almost exactly except for some formatting things, the same fee schedule that you saw in your January work session in which we discussed fees. Specifically, and to recap, there are, you know, the city of Laramie has always required fees in some sort of sense for different applications over time. With the UDC, under old code, fees, fee amounts, fees have changed. What you see before you in the strikeout emboldened version of the fee schedule there, this is to help you give you an idea of the changes of what actually is occurring here. I'll point out a few things that we think are important to note. Eliminating concept or pre-application meetings and a fee associated with that, we want as a city to reach out to people before they do projects and not have any type of fee associated with that. You'll see a change in the conditional use process or process fees depending upon the type of application. The applications vary in times of, amount of time that it takes for us to actually go through those applications in, when we're talking about things like a daycare versus an alternative front lot line or accessory structure. So that's why you see that tiered structure to alleviate some of that cost associated with some of those very basic applications. You'll see reflection in the site plan review process to address the changes that you made to council about a year ago in the site plan, doing the tiers site plans, a type 3, type 2, and type 1. Type 1 being a very basic site plan and taking little time for staff to review. You'll see some changes in the costs when it comes to final plats and preliminary plats, as well as PUDs. As we've become more versed and better with our PUDs, those are taking us a little bit...
a little bit less time. But also, in terms of the plats, we're noticing that the larger the plat, the more time it does take, so you see that reflection, more of a per-lot reflection. You do still have a cap, though, so we're not, even if you get into large plats, you're not seeing a huge burden placed upon each lot. You're also seeing some changes in the vacation process. Sometimes we receive vacations that are part of a plat. We're reviewing that anyway. It doesn't really make sense to have an additional fee on top of that, whereas vacations that come outside of that, it does, it does make sense, and you see that associated here in the fees. You also see a very similar change in the zoning map amendment. When someone wants to annex a piece of property, we have to zone it. So to zone it and annex it and have that fee be zero is an incentive for people to bring those properties into the city and not have any fees until they're, until they're actually in and developing that site likely through the plating process, probably. You also see some changes within the bottom portion of the, of the fee schedule. Those are mostly engineering fees, things like concrete fees, grading permit fees, right-of-way obstruction permits. We get a lot of those, especially during the summer, of people asking to put out tables, chairs, benches, things like that. Also, we receive those areas within rights of way that actually truly obstruct the right-of-way for a whole season or for something longer than the, than just a more routine thing like a table or something like that. We also see driveway access permits, where we provide permits or access to, to city streets depending upon where they're located and if they're a new driveway that's being, coming onto a city street. So what you see here, like I mentioned, is really what you saw in your January work session. There was very little discussion at that time, but I'd be happy to answer any questions. And the resolution that you have includes a, what I'll call, a clean copy of the, of the table as it would look if it was approved, so.
Yes, Counselor Henry and then Counselor Hanson.
Okay, so I just want to understand that, for example, on the conditional use, that the applicant would pay $435 for the conditional use application, and then in addition, if it was an accessory structure or uses associated with the resident structure, it's an additional $235?
Mayor and council, no.
No.
It's the opposite of that. If you're doing an alternative front lot line, you simply would pay the thirty, what is it, the $35?
Seventy.
Seventy-dollar fee. I'm looking across the, yeah, the seventy-dollar fee. If you're a type-two childcare home, you would only pay 135. And if you're an accessory use struc, or accessory structure associated with a residential structure, i.e. a garage or shed, you're, and you need a conditional use, you're paying 235. All other conditional uses, which are, you know, things like, it could be businesses, there's quite a few that fall under, and then they would just remain in that $435 category.
Thank you.
Counselor Hanson.
Thank you, Your Honor. I want to understand it, too. I think I understand it. But for example, let me see, the third line from the bottom, driveway access permit, there's nothing listed there. Does that mean there is no fee for it?
Go, what I would encourage you to do is look at your, the final version that's part of your resolution, and have, you can, it's very easy to see what the, it's a little harder on the strike-through version, I agree. So it would be $35.
Okay, okay. Oh, that, that's a two-liner. That's a two-liner.
Yeah.
Okay. No, I just want to understand it, because I want to know, basically, you say this is revenue neutral in some fashion, I think I read somewhere, more or less. So, a non-bolded figure means nothing has changed, right? A bolded figure by itself means that's a new fee, correct? And a strikeout with a bolded figure in front of it means, for example, on IGA 2001, or 201 review, that means the $560 fee has been replaced by a $450 fee. Is that right? Okay, then I have one question, and that goes to plat, preliminary, I think I'm reading that right. It used to be seven, 1,780, and now it says 2,500 max. Where does it start?
So if you, if you look, you have a $500 fee plus a $100 per-lot fee. What, one of the, this derived from the discussion that we had, the comment from members of the public of people doing smaller plats, being charged the full plating, preliminary plating fee. So really, what this allows you to do is, so if you look at the 1,780 dollar fee that we have today, you're looking at a, what does that come out to be, a 12, anything over 12-lot subdivision would mean that you're going to be paying more than what you, we do today, but you would never pay over the $2,500 max.
Okay, all right. I think I'm beginning to understand it. Thank you. But I had the same problem. I didn't know how to quite read this.
Other questions? I have a question. Why is the, why is the final plat less than the preliminary plat? Is it less work involved, or?
Mayor and council, yes. The, as Eric alluded to earlier, is that really a final plat is a check of the, of conformance with the preliminary plat. Over, as we've continued to refine our process, the adoption of the UDC, we've been more specific about what's required at the preliminary plat stage. Thus, when the final plat comes through, they're a much more polished document, and so the time to review it is, is less from a staff perspective. There's still technical components that we have to look at, but from a, from a time fee, or from a time perspective and what we're trying to do with the fee of how much time staff is spending on these things, we think that that's a little bit closer in line with what we should be charging, so.
And that leads into my next question. When you analyze these, and I'm more interested in the big picture ones, not, not the $35 and whatever ones. When you analyze these, when you analyze staff time, does it equal out? In other words, are there areas in here that staff is spending a lot more time on than what we're collecting on fees? And I'm more interested in the preliminary plats, final, the larger workloads, if you will, that are on here.
I mean, when, you know, for a review of like the larger applications, they vary differ, they differ.
Right.
Many projects that come in sometimes can be very complex based upon a wide range of things, like everything from the lay of the land simply to utilities to other, other issues that might be, maybe property ownership, for instance. So there are, you know, this is a very generic 30,000, you know, 30,000-foot view of plating in the city. We spend a lot of time on, on these larger projects. It takes meetings, phone calls. What we try to do with the fees here is we try to come up with a best, a best estimate of how much time we're spending on average. There are projects that we spend way beyond probably what this would be in terms of staff time, and there's others that it doesn't take us as much time. But really, in the, in the grand scheme of the, of the, of the fees that you see here, they're a fairly small drop in the revenue bucket in terms of what we're bringing in, even when we have a robust, lots of plats, lots of conditional uses coming in. And so, you know, by adjusting these fees, you're probably in number at the end of the year, probably isn't going to change a whole lot of how much revenue we bring in or don't bring in. It's, but.
The question was, the time spent, is it equal to the revenue that we're producing in the various categories?
No, it never is. It's, it's almost always, it's almost always somehow subsidized through the, through staff time and the, and what we have, you know, in terms of staff.
That's what I have a problem with, and I'll tell you why. I was a builder for many years. Take out a building permit, and I don't know what they are now, but it's substantial. I'm guessing it's for an average house, is, and I'm guessing because it's been so long, four or 5,000 maybe for a building permit on a 250, 300,000 dollar home? I'm not really sure. I'm just, a little more than that.
Yeah.
And that's not, and then you have a planned review fee. What I'm saying is, I've always had the impression that our building permit fees, we pay as builders, and also our planned review fees are reflective of the staff time. I've always felt that your developers, in some ways, are getting a free ride, and it's being subsidized by other avenues such as building permits.
Mayor, council, Mr. Mayor, I'll address that one. My career spans 30 years next year. I've never worked in a municipality or county. I've never taught to anybody else who's worked in a municipality or county in which these fees, planning and engineering fees, have been recaptured or have captured the total amount that staff time puts in. There is a subsidy, if you will, in every community that I'm aware of. It is a different concept from building permit fees, where there's a direct ratio between the value of the permit fee and the planned review component, if that exists, which we do have. But it is a universal, to my knowledge, I don't know of any exceptions where anyone has succeeded in capturing. I've worked in some pretty high recapture communities for fees, and I've never seen one that does it that way. I'm not, I'm not saying it's impossible, but I'm saying it would be highly uncommon. If I could add one briefing on the, I think one thing we should do from now on, and we will do, is put lines on these tables. So it looks like a spreadsheet. It's faint. I can't see it on my phone, and I suspect you with the electronics don't have that. So we'll put lines, not shading or stuff like that.
Yeah. The last question I have, or comment slash question, is, I know that when we, when we do preliminary plats and plats for the county, not the city, our donut area, the fees are the same as if they were being reviewed within the city. Am I correct on that?
Correct.
Yeah, and I know that we've received criticism from some developers or some people that have provided needed preliminary plats in the county, and their comment is, you know, all you're doing is checking to make sure the streets line up, the right-of-ways line up, and so forth and so on. You're not doing a full review as you are in a normal preliminary plat within the city, yet I'm paying this whatever it is fee that I feel is very unjust. And frankly, I kind of agree with them. Has any consideration been given to that to reduce the fees for people that are, that are just gaining our concurrence within that donut area?
Mayor and council, we did consider that. We actually spend just as much time doing those plats as we do the city plats. We were required to go to more meetings. We have to often set up more meetings simply with staff and their applicants in order to coordinate two multiple processes going through. It does not take us any less time. We still are reviewing it for all the technical components, like making sure that the engineering is done properly. We still are reviewing that. There's still those components. We're still looking at things like survey, making sure lots close and things like that. So a lot of times, also in the county, we have the less than, less than best, I'll say, records. A lot of times, properties and things like that have been transferred or moved around lot lines, and so sometimes even that research takes staff more time. So, I mean, it has been considered, but we think that they're still pretty close to the same amount of time.
Thank you. Any, any questions or comments for council? Yes, Counselor Hanson.
Thank you, Your Honor. It took me a second reading. Under temporary use permit, you took out city council, and I thought he put in ma, mayor. And then I realized, it's major. And I thought, wait a minute, something is wrong here. I just thought close reading was necessary.
Anything else? Anyone in the, anyone in the audience wish to comment? City Clerk, could you do roll call, please?
Henry.
Yes.
Weaver.
Yes.
Vitale absent Somerville.
Yes.
Schuster.
Yes.
Shumway.
Yes.
Hanson.
Yes.
Pierce.
Yes.
Polikas.
Yes.
That's eight yeses, zero no's and one absent, Your Honor.
That motion carries.
Weaver, 15.
Item number 15, Counselor Weaver.
Mr. Mayor, I move to postpone consideration of the purchase option agreement between, oh, it says right here, oh, that's a possible council motion, so I can phrase it to bring it forward, but the language I have here is simple to postpone it.
We'll do that.
Okay.
Great, for discussion.
Your Honor, I'd move that, I'd move for consideration of a purchase option agreement between the city of Laramie and Laramie County Community College.
Second. Thank you. There's a motion and a second by Counselor Shumway. Any discussions? Councilman Weaver.
Thank you, Your Honor. I would now move to postpone consideration of the purchase option agreement between the city of Laramie and Laramie County Community College for lots six through 11, Block 2, turn attract addition to the next regular meeting of council on June 21st, 2016.
Second. Thank you. Motion and second by Counselor Shumway. Any comments, discussion? Anyone from the public? City Clerk, could you do roll call, please?
Weaver.
Yes.
Vitale absent Hanson.
Yes.
Henry.
Yes.
Shumway.
Yes.
Schuster.
Yes.
Somerville.
Yes.
Pierce.
Yes.
Polikas.
Yes.
That's eight yeses, zero no's and one absent, Your Honor.
That motion carries.
And I apologize for that, Your Honor. Of course, I understand we always need to bring things forward, but I was just going off the language there.
I understand. Item number 16, Counselor Hanson.
Thank you, Your Honor. This is Resolution 2016-42, to appoint one member of the Laramie, to the Laramie Advisory Commission on Disabilities. And I would like to move that the council appoints John Poland to the Laramie Advisory Commission on Disabilities with the term expiring October 31st, 2018.
Second.
Thank you. There's a motion and a second by Counselor Henry. Any discussion? City Clerk, could you do roll call, please?
Hanson.
Yes.
Henry.
Yes.
Shumway.
Yes.
Schuster.
Yes.
Somerville.
Yes.
Vitale absent Weaver.
Yes.
Pierce.
Yes.
Polikas.
Yes.
That is eight yeses, zero no's and one absent, Your Honor.
Thank you. That motion carries. Item number 17, Counselor Somerville.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I would move that council approve Resolution 2016-43, to appoint Travis Helm to the Civil Service Commission and authorize the mayor and clerk to sign.
Second.
Thank you. There's a motion and a second by Counselor Hanson. Any discussion on the motion? City Clerk, could you do roll call, please?
Somerville.
Yes.
Schuster.
Yes.
Shumway.
Yes.
Henry.
Yes.
Hanson.
Yes.
Vitale absent Weaver.
Yes.
Pierce.
Yes.
Polikas.
Yes.
That is eight yeses, zero no's and one absent, Your Honor.
Thank you. That motion carries. Item number 18, Vice Mayor.
Yes, this is a resolution to approve two members to the Albany County Tourism Board. I move to approve Resolution 2016-44, to appoint Karina Hemslar and Jennifer Peterson to the Albany County Tourism Joint Powers Board.
Second.
Thank you. There's a motion and a second by Counselor Somerville. Any discussion? Yes, Vice Mayor.
You know, out of all the times we've, at least I've sat and interviewed folks for different boards and commissions over the years, this was probably a very difficult decision, because we had a group of four folks that were exceptionally qualified, and I really appreciate the applications, and it, it took Counselor Hanson and I some, some time and contemplation to, to come up with this decision. So we appreciate all the applicants, and we're, we just thank everybody for this.
Thank you.
My arm is still sore from the arm wrestling.
Counselor Hanson.
City Clerk, could you do roll call, please?
Somerville.
Yes.
Schuster.
Yes.
Shumway.
Yes.
Henry.
Yes.
Hanson.
Yes.
Vitale absent Weaver.
Yes.
Pierce. Pierce?
Yes.
Kalikas?
Yes.
That's eight yeses, zero nos, and one absent, Your Honor.
Thank you. That carries. And I may mention one thing. In the future, these resolutions to appoint members to boards will be on the consent agenda. However, if any counselor wants to take them off consent agenda for discussion, you'll have that opportunity to do so. Just, just give you a heads up.
Sounds good.
Next item is consideration of future council work sessions.
Your Honor, I have a question about this because this is the first time that the public hears, and including the, the appointees, hear about being appointed. And I thought it would be nice to make that known as soon as possible. They don't take that much time. And that way, anybody who listens or watches us doing this immediately knows who has been appointed and who hasn't been, hasn't been appointed and who hasn't been appointed. That was the, the purpose of keeping it on the regular agenda. I would caution us to take it to the consent agenda and thereby hiding it and not making it available to the public who want to watch it.
You make a good point. Counselor Schuster?
Yes. The other point is we were told we are not allowed to have it on the agenda because it is not decided until we vote for it.
Correct.
If we put it in the consent, we have released it the Thursday before it's even voted on.
Correct.
So I can't see how we're doing this legally.
It's got to go back on.
Well, let me take, I guess this is the deal. Since any counselor can pull it off, it doesn't sound like it's going to flow that way, so we'll just keep it the way it is.
Would you please? Thank you.
All right.
And it goes so quick.
We've got.
Yes.
Honorable Mayor and Counsel, you know, in the event that there might be one candidate for one position, that works, you know, that you could put it on consent, but at the same time, you may not have a consensus or a majority of the council to approve that person. So I really think it works better on the regular agenda from my, from my standpoint.
That's the direction we're going. That's the direction we will go.
Yeah. It was a thought.
Well, it was suggested to me by staff, and I said, oh.
Yeah, what do they know?
What do they know?
Taking an opportunity here to overrule all the people that.
You're really enjoying this power tonight, aren't you?
I'd certainly like it if none of you told Janine.
Certainly like it if you didn't tell Janine.
All right. Any work session items from counsel?
I think we're full up.
Seeing none? I'll move on to the next item, which is public comment by sign-up. And there are no sign-ups on public comment, so I'll move to the next item, which is item number 21, Counselor Hanson.
Yay. I move that council adjourn.
Second.
There's a motion and a second by the Vice Mayor. All in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? We adjourn.